Well, it's great to be able to welcome you to our online Bible study series. It's been some time since I've been able to share a video with you like this. So it's great to see you and be able to share with you. We are currently in the early stages of our new Bible study series. We've moved on from our series of Carpe Diem, thinking about how we can seize the day, moving to more of Bible study which focuses on Jesus and the words that we find in Scripture about Him and experiences with Him. This new series looks at the miracles of Jesus, looks into some of those stories, some of those experiences, things people witnessed that He did, things He said, things that happened. And so I pray that as we come to this new series, that it will really be enlightening for us as we come to God's Word, as we come to look closely at Jesus. I really pray that our hearts and our minds and our eyes will be open to His power at work and to how He works. In this first series, this first session of this series rather, we're looking at the very first miracle that Jesus performed. We're looking at turning water into wine. But before we come to those Scriptures and before we really look at the events of that day at the wedding in Cana, first of all, I want to begin by exploring, you know, what even is a miracle? I wonder for you, if someone were to ask you, you know, what is a miracle? I wonder how you'd answer? I wonder what you'd say, how you would describe it? Something completely unexpected, something seemingly impossible, something that can't be explained. I wonder how you would answer? And having thought about what a miracle even is, I wonder what your experiences of miracles, miraculous things? I wonder if it's something you've ever seen or experienced, if you've ever heard of a modern day miracle? If ever something's happened in your life and you can't understand it or explain it, to you it seemed impossible and yet it's happened? Is there something that you've experienced that you'd say, well, that was a miracle in my life? When it comes to thinking about Jesus when He walked on this earth, miracles are a big part of what people know of Him. There were many things He did which just wowed people. They were shocked, they were stunned, they were amazed. Those things we will come to look at more closely in the coming months together. But I wonder for you, when you think of the miracles of Jesus, what's the first one that comes to mind? What do you think is the most well-known, the most famous miracle of Jesus? And finally, I wonder what you think about this final question as we open our session this evening? Why did Jesus perform miracles? What was the purpose? I wonder what you think was the reason for Him performing these miracles? And so in this first session, we began to think about what miracles are and why they took place, why they still take place. But as we begin these studies, we're going to look at individual experiences that people had where they believed Jesus performed a miracle. And so we're going to turn to the first time that this happened. We're going to turn to John's Gospel and to chapter two, and I'm going to read from verse one through to verse 11. If you've got a Bible with you, pause this and turn it up, look up these words. The different translations will shed a different light on our understanding. I'm reading to you today from the New International Version. "On the third day, a wedding took place in Cana in Galilee. Jesus' mother was there, and Jesus and His disciples had also been invited to the wedding. When the wine was gone, Jesus said to him, 'Jesus' mother said to him, 'They have no more wine.' 'Woman, why do you involve me?' Jesus replied, 'My hour has not yet come.' His mother said to the servants, 'Do whatever he tells you.' Nearby stood six stone water jars, the kind that were used by the Jews for ceremonial washing; each of them could hold twenty to thirty gallons. Jesus said to the servants, 'Fill up the jars with water,' so they filled them to the brim. Then He told them, 'Now draw some water out and take it to the master of the banquet.' They did so, and the master of the banquet tasted the water that had been turned into wine. He did not realize where it had come from, though the servants who had drawn the water, they knew. Then He called the bridegroom aside, and He said, 'Everyone brings out the choice wine first, and then the cheaper wine after the guests have had too much to drink. But you, you've saved the best until now.'" What Jesus did here in Cana of Galilee was the first of the signs through which He revealed His glory, and His disciples believed in Him. Well, as we visit that story, as we take a seat at the table of this celebration, and we can see some of the things that are happening around us, I wonder what you notice as we've read that account and you've looked at it yourself? What jumps out to you from this event? I wonder if you, as you read that, if there's anything which surprises you? Maybe something you've not noticed before, if you've read the story before? Maybe some of the details came to life in a different light for you today? I wonder what it is that you notice? As you think about that day, that day at the wedding, where a problem had presented, where Jesus' mother Mary, she spoke up and she involved Jesus, and the servants were told to do as He commanded? I wonder if you could talk to any one of those people, any one of those characters, those people that were there that day? I wonder who you'd want to talk to first? I wonder what you'd want to ask them? Take a moment just to think about that. Who would you want to talk to that was there that day? And what would you want to ask them? And so as we take a closer look at this story, I asked, I wonder what it is that jumps out to you, how I'd love to hear your responses and for us to have that discussion. We had the joy of doing that last week at our group Bible study. It was wonderful to look at this passage of Scripture together. For me, the first thing that I really notice is that this is a time of celebration. This is a time of joy. This wedding would have gone on for some time, but here in this circumstance, in this situation, a problem presents. In verse three, it's noted, "The wine was gone, and Mary said to Jesus, 'They've got no more wine.'" That was the situation, and that was the issue. There's a number of things coming up here that often make me chuckle. I think it's the way I read them, it's the way that they're read in English. I love the response that Jesus gives in verse four. "Woman," he says, "why do you involve me?" Of course, we can't hear the tone, and something is lost, I believe, in the translation of those verses. There's a footnote in my Scripture that reminds us that when Jesus calls her woman here, it's not, it wouldn't have come across rude. If my son said that to me when I asked him to help with something, "Woman, why do you involve me?", I'd think, "Coy, he's being a bit lippy today." But that wasn't the tone that came across with Jesus. It was a word of respect, but yet He was questioning, you know, "Why do I need to be involved in this? A problem is presented. Why involve me? What have I got to do with it?" And then this really interesting phrase, "My hour has not yet come." That one phrase alone says so much. What does that mean to you? I wonder what you understand that to mean? Mary presents the problem. "They have no more wine." He responds, "Woman, why do you involve me?" And Jesus replies, "Because, you know, my hour has not yet come." What was his hour? What was his time? What was it that was coming? And she was wanting to start it now, but he wasn't quite ready. What does that mean to you? "My hour has not yet come." For me, as I reflect on those verses, it shows me a reluctance in Jesus. It shows me a reluctance to step up and to step in and to act. But it also, more importantly, shows me about the faith that Mary had in Jesus. She'd always known that this child was different. She'd always known that her son was more, that he would be about the Father's business. And here she was, sure that this was the time and that this was the place. She was sure that he, and she was confident in his ability, and so she commands the servants, "Do whatever he tells you to do." And of course, they do. She tells them to listen and to obey, and they do. And having been reluctant, Jesus does step up. He does step in. She's involved Him, she's brought Him into the situation, and so He does something with this problem that has been presented. He sees the sticks, stone water jars. These are not just jugs, these are not just pitchers. They're not water jars on a table. They're massive. They're ceremonial water jars. They are made of stone, they're big and they're heavy, and each hold twenty to thirty gallons. We're talking about big jars. We're talking about a lot of water, and therefore we're talking about a lot of wine that is being made, that is being transformed. Jesus commands the servants, He gives them the instruction that they have been told to listen to, to fill the water jars and to serve that water to the master of the banquet. Verse seven, "Jesus said to the servants, 'Fill the jars with water,' so they filled them to the brim. Then He told them, 'Now draw some out and take it to the master of the banquet.'" Something I notice about this account, about this miracle, is that as the master of the banquet was being served wine, he knew nothing of the problem that had occurred. He knew nothing of involving Jesus in order to produce this wine and to be able to serve Him. I wonder who was struck first by the miracle, struck first by the transformation? And I believe it would have been the servants. As they drew the water out of those jars that they had just filled themselves with water, it would have been them first who saw the change in color. It would have been them first who maybe had that aroma hit them as they poured it for the master. Once again here, God shows us that it's the last and the least, it's the servants, the humble, who first see that transformation and the glory of God. But it was the master who had the first taste. But before we think about the master, the taste, the fact that it was the finest of wines and the best saved till last, let's not rush on from those ceremonial stone jars. What happened in there? How did this miracle come to be? This transformation took place in an unseen place. What happened? Did it become wine as the water was put in? Did it turn to wine as the water was served out? A process that would take an awful long time and is quite lost on me as a non-drinker. How did that process happen in such a short space of time? I wonder what you think? Where did the transformation really happen? When did it happen? How did it happen? As with many a miracle, if not all of them, there is the place of mystery. That's why they are miraculous, that's why we can't explain them or fully understand. Those questions we have will never fully be answered. But I'm reminded as I look at that transformation in that hidden place, when I'm reminded of the question marks and the not knowing how, I'm reminded that I shouldn't be surprised that God changes things in unseen places. I'm forever struck by the other biblical hidden places where transformation takes place. I'm reminded from verses in Psalm 139, verse 13 through to 17, where we are reminded of the transformation of cells that takes place when a human being comes to life. Of course, when these verses were written in Psalm 139, they didn't have the privilege and the technology to be able to see step by step the forming of a fetus and a baby, how those lungs are created, how those bones have become strong. Those verses in Psalm 139 remind us of the transformation in the secret place of the womb. I'll share them with you now. Psalm 139, from verse 13, where it says this. "You created my inmost being; you knit me together in my mother's womb. I praise you because I'm fearfully and I'm wonderfully made. Your works are wonderful; I know that full well. My frame was not hidden from you when I was made in the secret place, when I was woven together in the depth of the earth. Your eyes, they saw my unformed body; all the days ordained for me were written in your book before even one of them came to be. How precious to me are your thoughts, God; how vast is the sum of them." Those Scriptures remind me of the miraculous transformation in the unseen place of the womb. And it reminds me in those verses that what this writer is saying is that whilst no one else could see what was happening, whilst no one else could see that transformation, "You saw my unformed body, and all the days before me were known and were written in your book." Sometimes it's in the, not only the unexpected places, but in the unseen places where God performs a miracle, where things are transformed. We move from thinking about the womb to thinking about the tomb. Of course, the greatest transformation, something that is pinnacle for each one of us in our faith. I turn to Matthew's Gospel, and I'm reminded in chapter 27, the story of the tomb that had been closed, the tomb which was darkness, the tomb which was death, the tomb which held the beaten and battered body of Christ, and the transformation that took place behind the stone, unseen to the human eye. In Matthew 27, I'm going to read for us from verse 57 through to chapter 28. From verse 57, it says this. "As evening approached, there came a rich man from Arimathea named Joseph. He had himself become a disciple of Jesus. Going to Pilate, he asked for Jesus' body, and Pilate ordered that it be given to him. Joseph took the body, and he wrapped it in a clean linen cloth, and he placed it in his own tomb that he had cut out of the rock. He rolled a big stone in front of the entrance of the tomb, and he went away. Mary Magdalene and the other Mary were sitting there opposite the tomb. The next day, the one after preparation day, the chief priests and the Pharisees went to Pilate. 'Sir,' they said, 'we remember that while he was still alive, the deceiver said, 'After three days I will rise again. So give the order for the tomb to be made secure until the third day; otherwise his disciples may come and may steal the body and tell all the people that he has been raised from the dead. This last deception will be worse than the first.'" "Take a guard," Pilate answered, "go make the tomb as secure as you know how. So they went, and they made the tomb secure by putting a seal on the stone and by posting the guard. After the Sabbath, at dawn on the first day of the week, Mary Magdalene and the other Mary went to look at the tomb. There was a violent earthquake, for an angel of the Lord came down from heaven, and going to the tomb, rolled back the stone and sat on it. His appearance was like lightning, and his clothes were as white as snow. The guards were so afraid of him that they shook, and they became like dead men. The angel said to the women, 'Do not be afraid; for I know that you are looking for Jesus, who was crucified. He's not here. He has risen, just as he said. Come and see the place where he lay. Then go quickly and tell his disciples, 'He has risen from the dead and is going ahead of you into Galilee. There you will see him now, as I have told you.'" What a transformation! What a change! A lifeless body, not only breathing and moving, but up and walking and out and on his way to Galilee. In the hidden place of the tomb, transformation took place. We don't see at what point, we don't see when, we don't see how, but away from human eyes, God's power was working. So we're thinking right now then of transformation within those stone water jars, transformation in the womb of a woman, transformation in the tomb. And of course, it was the prophets that spoke about the transformation that God's will wanted to see in each heart and life of His people and His believer. I'm thinking now about the transformation in the unseen place of the heart. In Ezekiel in chapter 36, we read beautiful words of prophecy that also speak about transformation in that unseen place. Let's turn together and look at what it says. Ezekiel 36, verses 25 through to 27, it says this. "I will sprinkle clean water on you, and you will be clean. I will cleanse you from all your impurities and from all your idols. I will give you a new heart and put a new spirit in you. I will remove from you your heart of stone, and I will give you a heart of flesh. I will put my spirit in you and move you to follow my decrees and be careful to keep my laws." There is a transformation in the work of the Spirit, which is done in the unseen place within a person's heart, within a person's life, in their very soul. God is the God of transformation, the God of miracles, and the God of miracles in unseen places. As you think about that transformation, as you think about what took place in that unseen space, we move on to thinking about what was produced. We think about the fact that as the master of the banquet said, "This wasn't just any wine, it didn't just change to look like wine, to solve the problem or pass off that it was all okay, but no, it was of the finest quality." It reminds us that the work of God, when He does transform things, He brings the best. He transforms us into the best version. He brings about the best quality. I wonder as you think about how this applies to you in your life today, how it applies to us in our world today? Where do we want to see transformation? What would we like to see transformed? What problem presents that we would be bold enough to involve Jesus? What would we say to Him and say, you know, "Lord, step in? Please, let's do what He says in order to solve this issue, in order to produce the finest outcome and the best outcome?" What does it teach us about what's possible and what God can do? This miracle shows me that, you know, with Jesus, there is hope in any situation. For us looking at this wedding, it might not really seem like a big issue, but this would have been massive for this family. It would have brought shame and embarrassment. It could even, you know, have distanced them from people in their community. To them, it was an important situation, and this miracle shows me that with Jesus, there is hope. There's hope in any problem that we face. There's hope for transformation, because with God, all things are possible. I wonder for you, what does this miracle show you? Take a moment to have a think about that. In our opening questions, we considered, you know, why would Jesus perform miracles? What was the purpose? Why do that? I wonder what you think about that question now, having revisited that account of that wedding in Cana? Why did Jesus do this? He was reluctant, he wasn't sure that now was the time to do this. Yet He did, He did step in. What was the purpose? In verse 11, we're told, what Jesus did here in Cana of Galilee was the first of the signs through which He revealed His glory, and His disciples believed in Him. There was much purpose to this miracle. Not only did it solve the problem because He'd had compassion on that family and the situation they were in, but by performing this miracle, it was the first of those signs in which He revealed His glory, and the disciples believed in Him. I pray that today, as we have once again revisited that miraculous event, I pray that it would show God's glory to us afresh today, and that His disciples today, we too, will build up our faith and believe in Him more and more. As we conclude this online Bible study session, I want to give moments of reflection before I pray with you. It'd be lovely to pray for you. Of course, I don't know who's sharing this right now and who I'm praying for, but I believe that as I pray today, God knows exactly who you are and where you are. He knows where you are in your spiritual journey, and I pray that this time will be encouraging and helpful to you. Before we pray together, there's a song I've chosen for us to listen to. It reminds us of, you know, who God is, who Jesus is. It's a song called Waymaker that reminds us that, you know, God is here and He's in our midst. At that wedding in Cana, Jesus was one of the guests. He was there in the crowd, He was there within the community, within the family. And here, God is with us, in our midst, not standing in flesh and blood beside us, but through the power of His Spirit is here. And still today, He makes a way. Still today, we can involve Him. He steps in, He's still the miracle worker. And so I invite you to listen to these words and to pray before I share words of spoken prayer with you today. Father God, I really want to thank you for the opportunity we have to open up your word and to spend time thinking on you. And I thank you, Lord, that although we are scattered, we're watching in different places at different times. I thank you, Lord, that we're united by your Spirit with us as we share in this time of study. And in these moments, Lord, I want to thank you that this is not just a story of old. This is not just a historical event we look at, but this is an account, Lord, of people's experience of being with you. And I thank you, Lord, that today you are with us. Through the power of your Spirit, you are here, you are in our midst, and that today, Lord, still today, we can know your glory. We can believe in you. We can live life with you beside us. Father God, I thank you that you are the Lord of miracles. You are the God of transformation. And I pray, Lord, that in our days, in our times, at this time in our world, please, Lord, let us see your work of transformation. Let it be done, Lord, in unseen places, though so that we don't know how, we don't know when. But Lord, will you please move? Will you please take the ordinary, the plain and the normal water? And will you turn it into wine, Lord, the finest, the best? May you do it, Lord, to show your glory and to show your power. Lord, for those of us who believe in transformation, for those who believe, Lord, that all things are possible, for those who have hope in you, Lord, we pray today that you will take our world, take our situations, see the problems, Lord. Lord, will you step in? We involve you. Let your time come, Lord, to transform, to bring hope and to bring salvation to all. Father, I pray this for each person sharing in this online session. I pray it, Lord, for the country of Ukraine, for the country of Russia and the countries around it. Lord, we involve you. Step into our situations, Lord. And only through your grace and power may we see transformation, I pray. Amen. I pray that the Lord will really bless you in the days ahead. Over the next coming months, we will look at different miracles together. Now that we're back to meeting in person here in Maltby, our group sessions happen on the first Thursday of the month. We will then share a video like this the week after, so that others can share in it with us too. Of course, if you're local, if you're nearby, come and share with us. We'd love to see you. Each Sunday at ten AM and our first Bible study, our Bible studies on that first Thursday of the month at seven PM. You're very welcome. Also each Wednesday from ten till twelve at the Bridge Community Hub. If you're nearby, come and see us. But for those who are further afield, may God continue to bless you and continue to help you in your own discipleship. God bless you all this week. Bye-bye.